Good evening. The regular meeting of the Central Berkshire Regional School District will now come to order at 7:01 PM. This meeting is both being audio and videotaped. If any one of the audience is taping, please let us know. If not, all those who are able, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Superintendent, please take your role. Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Bartel?
Here.
Mr. DePazio?
Here.
Ms. DiChamasso?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Carley?
Here.
Ms. Caluccio?
Here.
Mr. Hankley?
Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Mrs. Ladisori?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wegener?
Here.
Dr. Crackries?
Here.
We do have an open seat in Washington.
Our student rep?
Here.
And our CDA rep, we don't have anyone here this evening from the CDA, but we do have a court. Okay, thank you. Any responses from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on. And with your permission, we're going to move things around a little bit because we have a presentation. So tonight, we are very happy to welcome two gentlemen from MARS, from Massachusetts Association of Regional School Regional Agreements, and Steve Henman and Jay...
Barry.
Barry, thank you. We're glad that you're here, and we're going to turn it over to you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where would it be appropriately to stand these things? But here.
You can see it right up here. Move out of your way. We do this regularly.
If I'm looking like I'm a head of the replacement, just getting used to it.
Oh, good for you. Hi, Derek. I just had a cordis on my back. Excellent.
As I was introduced, I'm Steve Henman. I am the lead consultant for the MARS consulting group, which is part of the Matches Association of Regional Schools, and previous school superintendent. I have my own career was in education. I then became in '09 the executive director of MARS, and I went back into interim year in my old district, now Gansett Regional, Central Mass. And then I did some assistant work, and then just now doing consulting work. So I've been involved with this for the last 12 years. We're doing many regional schools and updating regional agreements. Okay?
Yeah, real quickly, my fourth year with the consulting group, and then prior to that, I was superintendent for eight years at South LeTal, Grantville Regional, and then prior to that, nine years at North Berkshire School Union, and then as principal at Tantasco Regional, which is located in Starbridge, going way back, especially I teach and assistant principal at Long Island High School. So that's where I've been, and very much enjoyed being with the consulting group. And I'll turn it back to Steve. We'll go through the process here.
Tonight, we wanted to talk to you about the process of updating a regional agreement. If you take a look at the laws, regulations, or government education, they don't give you a process. And we've developed a process to go through. We think it's pretty successful. Recently, we worked with Adams Cheshire in this area. We also worked with Jay's old district when he was superintendent at South LeTal in Grand Hill, on the regional agreement. So we've had quite a bit. We also have good working relationship with the Department of Education. So tonight, we're just going to go through a process that you could follow to update your regional agreement, and again, talk about those different things. So the first thing is, what is a regional agreement so everybody's on the same table? It's a comprehensive document that will make it easy to understand. It defines authority of a district, a member town to educate students, outlines commitments of member towns in a district, and unified elementary grade, K-12 if you already have K-12. So we've been working with some districts that had elementary separate from high school and working down when they put them together to become a K-12. One of the things to realize is that the towns come together, and then in a regional agreement, they create a school committee who then is operating the district. As we said, what a regional agreement creates, outline, review of over time, and has to reflect the measures of laws, regulations, and district policy procedures that you have in your district that you want to have. The key is that, and they measure the state laws and regulations have to be followed, and also for the Department of Education, we have to work with is a checkoff list of everything that needs to be in a regional agreement. Some things are already prescribed, other things saying you have to have, and you have to write what your local district wants to have. Regional have a section describing how to amend, and generally, what they say is that, and we have not studied yours yet, but we have, we have gone through the deal, but even have sometimes a percent of voters in a member town can say we want to initiate an amendment, or the school committee can initiate it. It depends how it's written up in the agreements. And what you have to do is you have to address Chapter 71, Section 14B, of all the things that must be in a regional agreement. We'll show you that at the end of this. Why amend a regional agreement? Comply with the educational format in 1993, another update by Manuel Jass, well, Manuel Mas, General Laws. What has happened is 93 changed how education is operated in the state. The duties of the school committee, duties of superintendent, and all of that has to be taken into account when we're doing the regional agreement. You comply with continual DSE regulation. Those regulations proposed by the department, they have authority, and they carry the weight of law. You add amendments into one document, add any amendments into one document, and includes the regional district policies and procedures. You want to make sure that they, you have the set procedures, you have the agreement, that's how you're going to operate your district.
One thing I might add to that is the, a regional agreement is also a reference document. So, you know, the names of your school leaders, the names of your school community members can change over time. So if the regional agreement is up to date, and it's in good shape, it is a place where you can go to learn about process and figure out how to approach a given task. So it is also a living reference document.
One of the things is, you don't open a regional agreement, you amend it. So if you are going to amend your agreement, you still have your agreement now that's in place. You go through amendment process, and if it failed, you still have that, the agreement that's in place today. It doesn't go, it's not, it's not an opening, closing like collective bargaining agreements. Not the same. You have to understand that. Also, agreements cannot absorb any past, future, or financial responsibilities. Can't write something and say, okay, we have to open up and pay any more debt. No, you have to pay your debt if people owe debts or any other things that you have that you have to take care of if you're doing an agreement. The most often biggest issues in a regional agreement are how school community members are elected. There are five ways that they satisfy the one person, one vote, which is constitutional requirement. Now, refer back to every 10 years, you notice the congressional districts are redone, because it's one person, one vote. They have to approximate about 500,000 each congressional district. You have to have a portion of how you want to do it. I believe you do it, you have, my members and I have looked at it closely, but again, there's five ways to be compliant for the one person, one vote. The other is the assessments. The statutory method has to be in the agreement now, as well as the alternative method if you want. You don't have to have what the statutory is required to be in there and defined. So what we suggest is if you formally call a regional amendment committee, called RAC, a subcommittee, the school committee to include regional school committee members, and we say if you want selectmen members, designate a regional town, FinCon, at-large, superintendent, business manager, service, ex-official members. And what, you want to get a cross-section of people in your different towns, because remember, at the end, you have to go back, and the towns have to vote it to approve it. So you want to bring everybody in so they're working together, and they go and sit in them, and they go back, they can report to their town, and a town meeting. Yeah, how many you put on, that's up to you. It's nothing prescribed by law, but however, it's one representative, one member town. And again, superintendent, business manager, service, ex-official providing information that if we were going to work with you, what we need to do, the work we need to have, and certain information we need to have. Again, you can choose how many you want, who you want, 12, 15, 16, you have to decide how big you want it to be. The process that we do, once you have a regional amendment committee, is they review the term for issues to amend. You want to, okay, what are some issues that people are concerned with? Then we go through, and we go section by section, and making sure we incorporate state laws and regulations. We review suggested amendments to the regional agreement that we find that maybe need to be in there because it's not in there. And then finally, we work with the district and the town council. And the other point was DSE review of the amendments. What we generally do is we go through, and let's say you go through section one through four for a meeting. Everybody fine, okay. Then we contact the Department of Education, say here's the types of things we want to suggest of, and put in, is this okay? Because the end process, the department has to prove it, and the commissioner has to sign off on your regional agreement. So this process is that the school committee would, first of all, it'll be mentioned later, but again, what I think, if a school committee approves it, now it goes to the member towns, they have to approve it, and then it goes to the commissioner for his approval. What we make sure is that we, when it goes to the towns, if the Department of Education, you'll see a little later, has given preliminary approval, saying if the towns vote this, then the commissioner will sign off. So we don't, we don't take something that hasn't been approved by the department.
When we go, excuse me, Steve, when we go through this section by section, a couple of things. One is not to change things that you're happy with. So we're not about making changes that are unnecessary. But as we go through it, we're often borrowing language from regional agreements that we know have been approved, that we know have been vetted. So it's a starting point for your discussion. So for example, if we're looking at section two, we know there's a couple of things you're concerned about, we'll bring you some previously approved language on that section, so you're not writing it from scratch, you're editing something that we know is pretty well done. Okay? And then the other point I just wanted to make is, one of the many things we've learned by doing these agreement, this agreement work, is it's really important to get the town attorneys to vet the document when you've got a draft prior to the Department of Education looking at it. So you've got all the local input done, and you've made the changes you need to make to keep everybody happy at the local level before it goes to the state level.
We do sometimes, we'll take it, some sections to the department to say, okay, are these okay? And then we'll go from there. And then we work with them to make sure that we, we don't like to consider a document, and then there's a whole bunch of changes. We try to, we can't do this, you can't do that. We try to make sure we're pretty close on line, we pretty know what they're looking for. Your member agreement, once you come up with an amendment agreement, it will go to the school committee. School committee votes approve, not approved, change amendments, and updates to the agreement. They have, they say at the end there. And then you see, we get preliminary approval from the department, and then we send it to the select boards. Now, we've done some vetting already before the front of that, so everybody's pretty much on board with it, with the formal process that it goes through. Because they will ask us if the department, you know, has the school committee voted this, yes, they have voted this, have the town councils seen, yes, they have. And not only the town councils, but also your regional council. Who's your regional council?
Russ DeBray.
Russ DeBray, yes. We've worked with Russ quite a bit, so, you know, Russ is very good at doing this. In fact, I talked to him about coming to us, and he'll be here. Okay. Select for the places in our article on the warrant, and an annual or special town meeting. Voters approve, disapprove, amend an agreement. All towns must approve, it's a majority vote at town meeting. Each town meeting would approve. If approved, the signed agreement is certified votes, sends to the DSE. So each town, we have to get, you have to get seven towns, am I correct?
Yes.
You have to get a certified from the town clerk that the vote, that there's an article in town meeting voted, and it was approved. And then the commissioner approves the amendment, and provides, provides all the compliance. They make sure, also have to get any compliance before he is going to approve that. The other thing is that we suggest is a community during the process is a community relations plan. Board of Select and FinCon members that are on the RAC, we suggest they make sure they go back to their selective boards and make sure that, okay, here's what we've been doing, anybody is concerned or whatever, so everybody's kept in the loop. School committee does the same thing at school committee. And then the community, the community RAC members communicate with other members in the community, and we have public forums. So that if you bring it in, so everybody knows, here's what's there. So when you get to a meeting, it's not a big surprise. You know, what's there. It also tells you when we, sometimes if we've done, we've gone halfway through, we've gone out to the meeting, we notice some issues, trying to find out what those are, and trying to solve those issues, and so that when you get to town meeting, it's pretty understood. And then we've been to several town meetings, you have to speak a couple of times, explain some things, and we've successfully, been successful the last couple, so it's been good.
The information meetings prior to the town meetings are pretty helpful. So if you have to do a lot of them, that's fine, do a lot of them. And visit the towns and give the people a chance to ask questions about the changes.
But a reflection amendment process requires careful thought. You can develop a significant community relations plan. Length of time of community amendment agreement depends on the segments of the issue. We developed one we worked with for two years. Another one I worked, one we did it in 10 months. So it depends how fast and what the concerns are. And if amendments are read and approved, the current regional agreement stays in place. So no one thinks, oh, so we're open, you know, it's what's in place, and so it'll stay there. Questions will take that, and I just would want to go over the last, these are what has to be in a regional agreement. If you have to put in sections, you have to have in there to define it. One of the interesting things is that I say, filling a vacancy. We're finding a number of things that the vacancy, if it's a vacancy, what the process is, doesn't define, what is a vacancy? And so that's a good question, what's a vacancy? So you said someone resigns, someone moves out of the town they represent, and they die. So those are the things you have to do. So again, you have to define it, and then the process of how you fill that vacancy is done. And so all of those things would be in your agreement, until we have a checkoff list to do that. So I think that's very briefly, because we want to keep it enough short, so it's a process that can be in place. The committee would appoint a subcommittee members, which is how many are on that, who? And you'd ask the member towns, which is the board of selectmen, whether the board of selectmen, however, that's how big you want to get it. I would be, I would say you want as many people involved and brought into the tent with you so that they know what's going on. Then try to keep a two, a shorter number. But again, it's a process, it's worked. We recently upped Adams Cheshire, looked with them, and theirs was passed. I just also worked with Spentry's Brookfield, it was passed. So again, we've worked well with districts, we've been at town meetings and answering questions, as well as working with the, you know, on facilitating with the process. If you are interested, you would for us to come work for you, and put out a request for proposal, and then if you can, then go through a big process, your business manager, I think is familiar with some of that. And actually go through that, and we operate that way. So be glad to answer any questions if you have right now. I said I keep it fairly short.
Well, you did a great job. I just have a comment. I'm impressed with all the checks and balances, the times that you have to go to the committee and get feedback, and then bring it forward. So I think that's a very helpful strategy for us.
What you don't want to do is go through six months to a year, whatever, a month and a year and a half, and all of a sudden get to town meeting, and all these questions come and blows up at you. You want to make sure everything has been ahead of time. In fact, one year, we, I think, we went to a town meeting to give them an update halfway through the process, they wanted an update. So that whatever is necessary to make it smoother than what you want to do. You want it to be a working document, and one of the things that we have found that districts and regional agreements have not been updated on a regular basis, we recommend putting in every 10 years based on the census, the federal census, and sometimes a review of five, see if there's any changes in regulations that have to be done. Also, sometimes there've been districts where their amendments haven't made it to the department, and we've worked through issues like that with them, so, you know. Questions?
How does the fee structure work? Do you do a flat fee, or is it for E and F?
What we do is we, our rate is $95 an hour for consultant, plus mileage. We ask that the lead district have a person to take the minutes, because it's a pub open, the meeting law takes minutes, transportation. And it can range anywhere, depending how many meetings, it can be anywhere from 10 to 15 to 20. Depends how many meetings, and we would negotiate that with you.
And what happens if, like, if it doesn't pass, and we probably want to keep it going? So we go through the process once, and if it doesn't pass, and I recognize that the original regional agreement stayed in place, but, you know, do you still work with us?
A lot of pay us, we work.
We gotta pay you. It doesn't pass, it's...
But can I just point out that there are multiple times during the process when we asked Desi for approval?
Yeah, no, it's not only by Desi, it's the towns when they go, you go to poll.
Well, we communicate with the towns.
And that's part of what we suggest, that we're neutral parties, okay? And that's one of the things, neutral parties in this process. And if you ask me to name all your towns, I can't, and I potentially don't, because I don't want to get into that. But again, well, we go neutral party. We would then be glad to, a lot of times, we do the presentations at the forum, we answer questions at the town meetings, which we've done. So we do those things, and to put you on the spot, because we've been dealing with you all through the whole process. If they ask us questions about work with the department, we work with them all the time. And they even have my cell phone memorized, they call me on stuff, and I've got theirs. But again, we talk with them and make sure that, we want to make sure, so when we go to town meeting, the department said, yes, if it's passed, we'll, we'll sign off on it. We recommended the commissioner to sign off. Again, if it failed, now, you have seven towns, and if you had one that didn't vote it, and we work with you to go back and see if we can, we're working with another district now, a town that failed, two towns have failed, and we're working with those towns to find what's the problem with that, so we work with you. We won't leave you hanging.
We'll already pay.
Mr. Hankley?
Thank you. I apologize if you covered this, and I missed it, I was a couple minutes late. Generally speaking, in your experience, and painting with broad strokes, what timeframes are you looking at from, say, the formation of the amendment committee to presentation to the towns, the school committee?
Yeah, so I'd jump in first, and let Steve.
Let's see if he can correct me.
But his thing about a year, his comment about a year, I think, is a helpful estimate, but it can be longer than that. I worked with a, Steve and I worked with a district on the South Shore, Bochek district, really kind of was very organized, had done some work ahead of time. It was less than a year, and that was ready to go. So it can be a year and a half if it, if there are complications, or if there's a failed vote.
See, if you were going to time something here, and you decided you want to do it and start this spring, Michael, our goal would recommend you is the following, 21 annual town meetings. What you don't want to do is try to rush it through, that people think, what are they trying to do here? You know, so everybody's comfortable with it, and if there are issues, you bring them on the table, and that's where we can be neutral parties, and what do you want to do, how do you want to solve it? So.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for coming.
Well, thank you for putting yourself front.
For giving us great information, and we will spend some time...
I think you, did you get a copy of the PowerPoint?
No.
We can send it out.
Send it out, that'd be great. Okay.
Thank you. We'll be touched.
Thank you.
Hi. So last night, Quiz Team won all their matches against PHS, and we also had our 23rd Civility Assembly hosted by Mr. Bracha. Prom Committee had their first meeting today. Last week, students picked their classes for next school year, which we were all very excited about. Also last week, the underclassmen and the junior class participated in an electives fair to help show them about all the electives that we offer, so that they can help make their decisions for next school year. On Monday, members of student council sold candy grams, which will be handed out tomorrow. This week, Wacono's chorus have been selling songs for Valentine's Day, and the chorus will be performing serenades for students throughout the school day. Our mock trial team has beaten Lennox, PHS, and Lee, and is now headed to regionals. Vienne Palteer, Natalie Pollard, and Jack Pudlow have had work displayed at the Berkshire County High School Art Show on February 1st. And on January 31st, some of the junior class had job shadow day and went to various art stores at the county to shadow jobs.
Thank you so much, that was great information. I'm sorry I missed Civility Day yesterday. Okay, secretaries report, the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23rd. Will someone make a motion, please?
To approve the minutes of January 23rd?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? These are the amended minutes, by the way. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The motion is carried. Thank you. Financial warrants. Will a member please make a motion to approve the warrants?
Sure. Motion to approve warrant number PR 2020-16, dated February 6, 2020, payroll in the amount
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Abstained? One abstention, motion carries.
Motion to approve warrant number PR 2020-16D, dated February 4, 2020, accounts payable to the agency accounts in the amount of $113,641.32.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? One abstention, motion carries.
Motion to approve warrant number AP 2020-17, dated February 14, 2020, accounts payable in the amount of $402,313.37.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Motion to approve warrant number APW 2020-13, dated February 14, 2020, accounts payable in the amount of $382,021.36.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. We also have gifts and donations. We have a donation from the ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the donation of $500 to the Student Activities Fund from ExxonMobil Education Alliance Program to be spent on math and science-related mini-courses students will be taking during the academic field day in the spring, as recommended by the district treasurer.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just one question, is that something that was applied for, or was that a spontaneous gift?
It was applied for.
No further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now we have communications. We have a vacancy in Washington. We thought we would have an interview this evening, but probably not. So we'll just hold back till the next meeting. I also wanted to tell you about the seven-town advisory meeting. It's going to be taking place on Mon, no, Tuesday, February 25th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. And we had our MARS regional agreement presentation, so we're up to subcommittees. Curriculum, we have no report, but our next meeting is February 27th, and it will be about the, let me see, it will be about new civics requirements in grades 8 and 12, and Leslie Blake Davis will be providing us with that information. So I'm looking forward to learning about that. It's all new for us, because of the new social studies requirements. Okay, finance.
So Greg is going to present the ten basic areas, and then I'll do the report on finance after this presentation.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Actually, before we start, I do have a couple things to add to the, your invite list. These are school choice, I believe you have the school choice numbers, but these, this breaks it down by district, the receiving and the sending students. I'm going to start at the end, just because each one has two pieces of paper, so just make sure you take both.
So Brett really is going to do the vast majority of this presentation? That's what I said. Because we really don't have any substantive changes. And we were able to bring the budget down a bit, and we are going to continue to work towards that, especially in relation to how the budget impacts the town assessments. We are waiting on a few other factors within personnel that might give us some ability to do so, but those are still not confirmed. are still not confirmed. So our budget, I think the important piece of this is as we are looking at slight decreases as we move forward in the process, we are not looking at losing positions or changing anything we originally proposed. So all of these things are the same from the previous presentation, and we are just keeping them the same because we really are prioritizing our tiered instructional model, but while also being fiscally responsible. Later on this evening, I will talk a little bit about the MTSS conference. We were highlighted at the state conference this year, they did it in two different locations, one in Springfield, one in Newton, and they got over 80% of districts to participate in some capacity. So there's a lot of buy-in. What that is, is multi-tiered systems of support, using evidence-based strategies to support all students, moving towards more proactive positions than reactive. So for example, one of the things in our budget, this is our next slide, the addition of two registered behavior technicians. Those are the kinds of positions that are highlighted as proactive positions, versus traditionally there are positions like paraprofessionals that can be reactive. They don't have the opportunity to plan or have specific training. So I did just want to point out that we are continuing to preserve our original goals as we move into some of the details around finances, but you do not see any changes right now that impact that.
Two for me, five. I'm watching.
At all times.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so these are the increase, there are some of the increases that are in the budget. Some of these you did see last time, so like salary, those are just contractual increases. The benefits, we did have our Berkshire Health Group meeting. We are not seeing any increases in active pub insurance, but we are seeing some in the retirement rate. So I didn't anticipate that 23,000. That is the 4% increase for retirees. The open trust is still funded, level funded at 40,000, that's the same as last year. Transportation, that is, that you did see last time, that has not changed. There's a $35,000 increase. That is just a contractual increase for two, four. And I did want to make sure, the 15,000, however, that is a new increase. We anticipate to see a decrease in special education transportation through circuit breaker reimbursement. However, we're not going to see that until FY '22. We're still going to see a decrease at some point, but we'll see the funds next year, but then we'll use it for the FY '22 budget.
So we're trying to referencing as well, we saw very little impact in the student opportunity act, but we do know that. We've talked about that a little bit, we'll talk about it more, we exceed the minimum, which is a very minimal.
Student services, that's the same as last time, 250,000 increase, and we are watching that, and we're trying to chip away at it, but that is the reality right now. And then the retirement contribution, that is the same as last time, that is just a bill we get from Berkshire County Retirement, the bill was increased by 3,000, so. Some of the decreases, some of these are, were on last time, some are new. So the utilities, that's just me looking at the past couple years, how much we've used in etho, gas, and oil, thought that we could decrease it by a little. Unemployment obligation, that I did decrease by 21,000. We just really don't have many, any layoffs or unemployed, so we can go with that by 21,000. Staffing changes, that is a new decrease. We've had one retirement since the initial budget at Nessicus, and we had a staff change this year, so that, you do see an $18,000 savings there.
The raw salary.
Charter school assessment, that did change since the initial. We are seeing the assessment go down by 20,000, but however, our revenue is also just afraid to go down, so it's not a complete savings here, but it does help. Technology, some of the two did see last time, 155,000, that is using real aid funding. They were both in the budget last time, in the initial budget, but I just want to make notes that 10,000 was also a decrease that our director, Joe Sturgis, was able to get our ISP, ISP, our firewall down because ISP is provided, so it was a nice savings. Nice to see the, some of the other directors trying to keep an eye on the budgets as well.
Greg, I have a question about utilities. Will you see a decrease in that number because of the new high school construction?
I think so, but utilities is such a hard time, hard to estimate, so without more.
We will do, we will be, you will already get the process of the budget, what it will cost a lot of high schools, so those numbers will become more firm as we move towards opening a new high school, so it will be more reflective of what it will cost a lot.
So the overall budget, so the tentative budget is sitting right now at 28,75,910. The adopted FY '20 budget was actually on 7 million, it's unchanged, so that is an increase of 1.6%, or 441,000.
That's all, yes.
This slide shows some of the anticipated revenues. Most of this did stay the same, however, we do have our new chapter 70 estimate, so I did use that. Chapter 71 also came a little higher. However, I'm being a little conservative with that number because with all the changes in the state funding, chapter 71 is usually the first one they chip away with if they needed to change some of the funding. So I didn't want to go in too high here and not get that. Then the other thing you'll see here is the charter school reimbursement went down by 11,000. But everything else, it stayed the same, the 15,000 increase in interest income, that is just our new treasurer's, watching the counts, we're moving to money markets rather than savings, so we will see a higher interest rate. Any questions on this slide? This is a breakdown by program area in the budget, this is where you'll see the increases. I did add a middle column there, that's the increases from the initial budget, so that's where you'll see if there's any changes. This number is also in this number though, so it's not a $10,000 increase, it is 7,000, but then 3,000 is part of that. Here, this is the 20,000, that is the charter school assessment. 18,000, that you will see the two staff changes at the middle school. 15,000, that would be the transportation. And then I did decrease that by 50,000, that was when I, we have no increases for the active. Any questions on these two? There really haven't been many changes since the initial at this point. This is a breakdown of the top five operating expenditures. As you can see, about a little more than 75% is salaries and benefits, all by special education services and transportation. And after that, operation maintenance, but then everything else falls in with the 5%. These are some of the special revenue sources, so this is what our title one, or title grants, title 102, additional special needs. Those have been pretty consistent from this year, and I'm anticipating that they will be. You'll note that the food services, that one is still pretty large. We are working on that, and actually a lot of that funding will be used to purchase the food service equipment for the new high school. So we do have a plan for that. The, this, it comes from the October 1 numbers, and actually in the fact this week, you'll see that the official October 1 numbers are in there. This, I believe, was on the last one too, but you will see one change in the October 1 from 2019, numbers that were in the initial. There was one student reported as Dalton, and I believe they were actually Hinsdale. So that change hasn't reflected, and that's reflected here as well as the capital expenses, you'll see that later on. But this brings in the five-year total with the average for five years. I hope you can see, this is the anticipated assessments for the tentative budget. Right now, the overall increase is 2.6 for the towns, but that ranges from, I guess I get 12 from Woodcunnington to 6.9 for Washington. We are taking a look at this when we move to the final budget to see if we can get this 2.6 number down. Any questions on this slide? I know this is the one I think the towns have been waiting So the next couple slides are the breakdown of the capital expenses, each individual capital expense. And on some of these, you will see the change, if there was a student there from Hinsdale, that you'll see it here. So these numbers are different than the initial. Overall, total numbers are the same, but the town, the town numbers are different. And this is the overall capital budget. So you'll see the year-over-year change at the top, and then the breakdown for each of the towns. However, the towns did see this with the initial budget. The tentative budget. Any questions?
Can you guys present the name of the town besides Dalton?
I believe the only one that we are scheduled to go to is Hinsdale on the 14th.
Dalton, Hinsdale, the week after the vacation, and then Cunningham did reach out, they want us to schedule a time though closer to March.
I just had one question. In the budget there, especially in Nessicus, it showed that you eliminated $80,000 for coach. Does that mean you eliminated the coach position, or?
So actually, with the coach position, last year for the budget, that was a coach, but after the budget, it ended up being an assistant principal of teaching and learning. So I moved that funding from the middle school to instructional leadership, so it'll be a.
Reading, and you see it disappear.
Yes, just in the right category, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
See you again in a couple weeks.
Yeah, so we will be, I believe, signing again at the next meeting for the public hearing.
We will be.
We will.
Okay, so if you notice, I'm going to start with the motions to the budget, what I'm voting, then I can give the update on the report, if that's okay. So the first motion, tentative fiscal year 2021 gross salaries and benefits adoption. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District adopts a tentative gross salaries and contractual salary increases for our employees in the active employees insurance benefits budget for the school year 2020 to 2021 in the amount of 18,764,860 dollars as proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2021 maintenance and operations budget document and as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Thank you for your efforts.
And I'm impressed with the total number, the effect of only a small increase. Okay, seeing no more discussion. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you, Bonnie.
Tentative fiscal year 2021 retirees benefits adoption. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a tentative retirees health insurance benefits budget for the school year 2020 to 2021 in the amount of 2,036,538 dollars as proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2021 maintenance and operations budget document as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Tentative fiscal year 2021 operating budget adoption, whereas by its regional agreement, the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee must prepare a tentative budget 75 days prior to the first annual town meeting. Therefore, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a tentative gross operating budget for the school year 2020 to 2021 in the amount of 28,75,910 dollars as proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2021 maintenance and operat, sorry, maintenance and operating budget document as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Tentative fiscal year 2021 capital budget adoption. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee adopts a tentative capital budget for the school year 2020 to 2021 in the amount of 2,229,937 dollars as proposed in the tentative fiscal year 2021 maintenance and operating budget document as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Now we have a discussion, possible vote on a resolution. Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
We'll go back to A now.
I just wanted to make notes, those school choice papers I sent out or passed around earlier, those should go in tab 14 of your binder.
Thank you. Bonnie, would you please speak for me? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's, okay. Before I did mention, our next finance subcommittee meeting is March 4th, 2020, at 5:30 at the central office. So the finance subcommittee actually had two meetings since our last school committee meeting. The first one was on February 4th, 2020, at the central office, and the single agenda item on that meeting was the tentative budget. All the highlights in purple and red. One of the things that was mentioned was that we would like to have the town assessments be below at 2.5% or lower, because we are going before the towns for this budget increase and with the high school. So it would be favorable, favorable to have less than two and a half. Our second meeting was predicated by the fact that several members wanted to have an agenda item on the February 4th meeting, which was not concluded. So we had a second meeting on February 11th, 2020, and that was held at Nessicus, and Mr. Peters is going to give a little overview of our discussion, and then we can talk about the, I guess, thank you.
Okay, so this is a discussion about the vote July 25th. So not everybody here was on the committee last July when we voted, we voted to amend, to propose an amendment to the regional agreement. This was brought on by some challenges we were having with the town, not just the town, several of the small towns, and their issue they were having with the way the vote was taken, even though there really was no, nothing done illegally, but they were, they felt like they were, they'd like to see some changes in the regional agreement. So we agreed to bring that to the school committee, and they proposed language, but in that, in that language that they, that we voted on July 25th, we also had in there that we could amend the language as written, because it really, the language that was written in there wasn't good for either the small towns or for Dalton. So we're going to work on a compromise and submit that as a change to the regional agreement. So we started in October, got together with some members from the towns, and we come up with a couple different compromise ideas, the three different compromise ideas that we would, that both towns agreed to, both Hinsdale and Dalton were present at these, at this meeting. And they both agreed to these three different compromise languages. So we submitted those to DESI back in October to be approved if they, if they thought we could approve that and add that to the regional agreement. Well, we got anecdotal evidence back in early January that DESI was not going to approve that, but not from legal. We didn't hear back from DESI legal until January 29, which was just a few weeks ago, just before the fourth meeting. So they finally got back to us, and the result was that essentially they said the three compromise languages were not accepted, they wouldn't accept them as an amendment to the regional agreement. And the language that was put forth by Hinsdale, they amended that language a little bit, they took out the piece that was basically defying the state law. And ultimately, what, what happens is, this school committee, we can't supersede state law, so the regional agreement can't supersede state law. We can make a handshake agreement to say we're not going to use one vote or the other, but it's only as good as, not even as good as the paper it's written on, because the school committee could anytime take a vote and go back to either way they want to vote at any time, because the state law is the ultimate decider there. So essentially, there's really no change to the regional agreement, but we agreed to send something to the towns to vote on, changing the regional agreement. So that's why I have on here something to do, you know, take some action about the July 25th vote, because, I mean, there's, we could do three things. We can ignore it, we can rescind it, we can vote on the way it is written. And I don't think, I think probably the best thing to do at this point would be to rescind it, but that's not, it's up to the school committee to decide what to do there. And instead of deciding tonight, you, basically giving you two weeks, we're going to say, I'm going to ask for this motion to be passed, but basically, you can take a look at the, you can think about, have two weeks to do some research on yourselves and decide how you want to decide on this, and then two weeks from now, at the next school committee meeting, not the next school committee meeting, is that two weeks away? It is two weeks away, at the next school committee meeting, that we would vote on taking action on that. Whatever, at that point, we'll decide what action to take, either to. Whatever, at that point, we'll decide what action to take, either to, you know, vote on the thing, rescind it, or ignore it, one or the other. My, my, my suggestion, you know, is that we, you know, we, you know, the school committee, not this school committee, a previous school committee, because there were lots of members that weren't here, had agreed to do something about this. And, you know, I still think, we're still in the same situation we were in last year. Now hopefully, we don't have a capital project coming up the next few years, so this is all moot point anyway. But we do need to address this with the towns. And we have a seven-town meeting coming up on the twenty-fifth. And we will explain our situation at that seven-town meeting, the situation that we're in with respect to the July twenty-fifth vote and how we, how the school committee is going to move forward regarding that July twenty-fifth vote. So is there any questions?
Do you have a copy of the motion? You said we're going to vote on the motion tonight.
Is, I do have a copy of motion to, of motion, but it is strictly a motion to reconsider the vote. It's not, it's not a motion to rescind or anything like that. It's just a, a motion to consider. So the school committee will then have a motion, a discussion next meeting to, that can vote for either rescinding it or taking a vote on, whatever. Tonight is just saying, hey, you guys agree to reconsider this vote on the next school committee meeting.
Can you read the motion you're going to give to the board?
Sure. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves to reconsider the vote taken on July twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen regarding the method of incurring debt. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. I do.
Sure.
You're asking people to read up and make their own opinions based on the evidence that there is. But can you provide that information to our new members so that they can see what's going on?
Sure.
That would be great to put together some package that explains the whole process, what we did, what we want to do, where we're going forward.
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
May I just make an observation? I think it's a very wise move, and I think other people on this committee would say the same, that giving all seven towns, they compromise, that they can make up this district an opportunity to have the information presented to them in a collective meeting is the right way to go. Because that way, we avoid the situation where we're meeting with one town or another town or not all the towns are together and very transparent. And that's what I believe the majority of the towns would appreciate. So thank you for that.
Any more discussion? Questions, concerns?
I will put that package together and probably get it out to you early next week or over the weekend. No, not over the weekend, early next week.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but if we're asking people to research and make a decision, we need to be informed.
I mean, there's a small group of people who were working this process all the way through since last July.
Right.
You know, so yeah, I'll get the information out there.
Just a clarification, because I believe it was brought out in our meeting. The motion has to be made by a person who agreed, who voted yes for that originally. You were?
Yes.
I just wanted to make that for the record.
Sure.
And I don't know who seconded it. I don't know if that has to be. Okay, that's all.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, are we all done with finance?
No, to me.
Great. Thank you very much. Policy.
Okay, we met this past Tuesday. The first thing we covered was going back to our previous meeting when we had talked about adding a code of ethics for, to the policy manual. In looking at a draft code of ethics, we determined that there was a lot of overlap with our current code of conduct. So we worked on eliminating that overlap and kind of combining the two documents, which we did. We also looked at the policies concerning homeless student enrollment rights and services, educational opportunities for children in foster care, and educational opportunities for military families. There were changes to the mask policies for those three policies. So we adjusted our manual to match those changes. And all of those changes will come at our next meeting, at the next school committee meeting. And we have not set our next meeting yet.
Thank you. It was a very productive meeting. Personnel.
I would like to have an executive session toward the end of the meeting, or we can do it now whenever, to talk about the amendment to the superintendent's plan.
Okay. And I know that safety and wellness has not met, and we're going to be discussing that policy next. Okay, Wacona Building Project.
Yeah, so things are getting close to March. So they're, they're going to start, the tentative date to start to put up fences is March thirteenth through sixteenth is when they're going to be mobilizing and starting to put up fences. It's going to start to see some action happening at that point. Before that, the next biggest hurdle we have is the ninety percent construction document review session. It's going to happen on the fourth, sixth of December down in Boston at the DRA's offices. And it's where, we had a similar one at the sixty percent construction drawing, which is a really good meeting where you see the people that are quoting on the bids that are quoting in. And both our construction manager at risk and our owners' manual manager, they basically make sure that all the different quotes that come in, bids come in, that they're in agreement on them. And it's a really good opportunity for, for us to defend ourselves at that point. That's, that's what our owners' project manager does there, is make sure that we're in the best bang for our buck. And this is the ninety percent construction document. So this is the last one before they start construction. And MSBA, this is a requirement from MSBA. So Tom Callahan and Minnie will be there. I probably will be there as well, along with the owners' project manager at DRA. And that's it.
Can't believe it's almost March.
It's good. Things are going to happen, but at the school committee meetings, there's going to be fences up out there.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any questions for Rich? Thank you very much. Okay, superintendent reports and recommendations?
So we had mentioned earlier during the budget presentation that we were invited to present at the MTSF conference. So I had done a case study for the request of individuals at the Department of Elementary and Education. I think Principal White might be largely to thank for some of the attention we got in my case study. I was able to write as well as the work of our assistant superintendent and many of the other excellent things happening in the district. But we absolutely have gained the attention of the department when you go from meeting seven or eight percent of your targets to seventy-seven percent of your targets in a middle school in one year. Certainly seeing all of our accountability scores increase, as well as all of our criteria and reference scores as well was a positive. When we actually did the reflection to highlight the work that we've done, it was really nice exercise because we are doing a lot of the things that they are highlighting right now as best practices. The point of the conference was to bring everyone together because a part of the Student Opportunity Act is you can only fund what is deemed to be evidence-based practices. So anything you're using, the additional funds are, whether you got thirty dollars a student or you got fifteen hundred dollars a student, you have to be selecting things that are evidence-based. You cannot be arbitrarily using that money. So what they did was they highlighted different practices that are found to be evidence-based. And many of the practices that they highlighted are practices that we have in place. We certainly have work to do and we want to continue to implement those practices with as much fidelity to make sure they're as effective as possible. But we have a lot of them in place, things like proactive resources, resources versus reactive resources, curriculum that has been well vetted for multiple different viewpoints, as well as co-teaching models. So that was a positive. Our professional development model is very targeted and very specific. So if you have a chance, please do read that case study. I think it speaks nicely to some of the priorities we have stayed the course with for several years. So one of the greatest benefits we have is we have a very aligned teaching and learning team. We have an administrative team that really takes a big picture approach. And that's a challenge, you know, when you have individual buildings constantly just lobbying on behalf of themselves and kind of going in different directions. We don't have that. So that's one of the benefits, I think, that really moves us forward more quickly. When you hear from our principals, when you hear from our academic leaders in terms of people like our content coordinator, Sean Therrien, you've heard from, Brian Katton, Patty Roby, our coach, everyone's really talking the same message and prioritizing the overall well-being of students pre-K through twelve. So please do read that if you have a chance. If you want to learn more about, because one word term, jargon term is always, always a good thing, MTSF. We've been talking about inclusive practices. Inclusive practices really are universally designed learning, PBIS, which is our behavior support, having a proactive approach to behavior, and then having social, emotional, and learning supports that are trauma-informed practices. We prioritize all three of those. What multi-tiered systems of support is doing those well for all kids? Just having multiple different tiers that really are meeting the needs of all learners in a proactive way. But if you want to learn more about that, please do read our case study because it highlights the practices we are proud of, that we have tied to improved outcome. But it also explains it at a, a larger level. We had a positive meeting in Dalton with the select board. There were some really good questions. Questions similar to the one that Dr. Kraft resexted tonight, just about how we will be planning for the cost to operate the new building. And we talked to them about the exercise that we go through. Certainly, there is always variables, but we will be able to predict with a fairly decent level of confidence based on the exercise DMSBA requires of a budget in advance of the building opening. But it was all very positive. Select board members spoke, spoke appreciatively about the social, emotional supports we have in place, wanting to continue to see those. So it was, we'll probably try and go back before the final, just when the assessments become a little bit more firm. The monthly memo to staff, just so you kind of see what's going on in the district, that's just more of an internal communication, but it tells you more of the logistics that are happening. And then you have heard our assistant superintendent talk about the social studies grant that she wrote. You also heard that Dr. Kraft resepted at the next curriculum subcommittee, they will be highlighting the new specifics requirements. And our assistant superintendent partnered with Pittsfield, I think her title is the curriculum coordinator, field director. Similar, similar responsibilities though, to write a grant that we did end up obtaining. We think we were more competitive because of our partnership with Pittsfield. And a lot of it will be done through consultation with Harvard University. So maybe at some point, Leslie can talk to you about the collaboration with Pittsfield. Because this is a, we collaborated with Pittsfield in a lot of different ways, which actually we co-write a grant for specific consultation to implement an academic requirement. It's very specific, a little bit, a little bit different than what we've done to date, so. Any questions, Bonnie, Anna? There's several links in the report, so if you have some time for more reading.
Thank you very much. There are also senior activities listed. And I've been to the senior assembly and I've been to graduation and they're both worth attending if your schedule permits. It's really an amazing thing, that senior assembly especially. Recommendations for school choice openings?
Oh, yes. Oh, sorry. Let me talk to that really quick. So we are open for school choice. We are just not open in every building in every grade level. So we do say we're open. That's all DESI's interested in, is if we're open as a, as a district for grades. They're not open in, they're not interested in school by school. So we are open in all grade levels. We're recommending we're open. I think it makes really good sense to be open. The only places we would not right now, unless there's something that pretty drastically changes, be open in is grade three at Kittredge, grade four at Kittredge, and grade three at Craneville. But we are open in grade three at Beckett-Washington. I would anticipate what the recommendation is. We have a number of seventeen. We are open in grade four at both Craneville and Beckett. So we can consider sometimes, if a family does apply, we're able to have a conversation. And they sometimes are interested in Beckett, even though they were originally asking for Kittredge, so that kind of thing. But our recommendation would be that we open K through twelve, but that we do not open in those specific grade levels. The only class size number that looks slightly high right now, relatively speaking, is grade three at Kittredge, has a number of twenty-five. The reason I'm not really looking to have much dialogue around that right now is really twofold. Number one, Greg and I have talked and are going to have some conversations with Mary Kay and Kathy about potentially approaching some, some families that live on the Washington line about interest in Beckett-Washington because that has a class size of seventeen. So even two students taking us up on that offer would change that class size. The second thing though is I currently have four kindergarten teachers at Craneville. I do not know in the budget, there's four, there were four this year. We had a big bubble this year with kindergarten, our own kindergartners. If we don't have that size, which is, we do not know, we will not know till May. If we don't have that size, we could have a conversation about that position. So we're carrying a fourth teacher in kindergarten at Craneville. I think it's the only thing we can do. Because last year we needed it. If we don't need it though, which we very well may not, that's another conversation we can have. It's not a huge number, twenty-five in grade three is happening all around the state. But I think it's a number worth at least having a conversation with a couple of families in case there's an interest. And then if we get some flexibility out of kindergarten, it's a conversation that we would have.
When you say grade three, is that kids that would be in third grade next year or the current?
Yes, next year, yeah. Next year's third grade at Kittredge is projected to be large. Which isn't always common for Kittredge, but it is right now. We do have a coaching principal, we know that. We have math interventions, we have support personnel. But that's the one that we're kind of looking at and thinking about having some conversations. The rest, I think, are quite reasonable. We're starting to look long-term at Wacona. Numbers look like they make sense. We know we won't open the building anywhere near a hundred percent capacity, but we will be over the eighty percent capacity it was built for for, I believe in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, slightly over. By twenty-twenty-three, we'll be under the eighty percent.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the enrollment at Craneville. So are we saying we're keeping the four teachers for fourth, for the incoming fourth graders and yet sticking with the three for the even incoming third graders for next year? Because right now, the class sizes seem flip-flopped, slightly. But right now, the third grade is larger than the, or the second grade is larger than the third, the third grade.
So if we were to change that though, we would be very, I think disproportionate, right? Because right now, we're able to keep third grade at Craneville, twenty-four students, which is kind of what we had projected, that that's where we close for school choice. So those weren't our own kids, and we have twenty-three. We had put that on our original projection a few years ago. We'd be taking some. So third grade at Craneville makes sense for us, but we're closed there. Whereas I think the fourth grade, we need those sections.
But there's only three classes in both third and fourth at Craneville.
May I ask you a question? Fourth grade, no, no, third grade has, current third grade has four teachers.
Four teachers. Third grade is four teachers.
Yes, and we're continuing with that. So we don't, there's no changing.
So that would reduce the sizes of that class right now.
Right, but the current second grade has just, has slight, has just about as much, maybe a little more than the current third grade. So why are we keeping third grade at, or the current second grade going into three teachers and keeping the current, the current third grade at four?
Three, third, fourth, third and fourth. So I don't think the fourth, there's seventy-two students in next year's third grade. And I'm only just saying three now, these are twenty-four.
Oh, we have even more flexibility in that?
Yeah.
Thanks, Ellen. So we do, you're right, even the third and the fourth, we have even more flexibility. So one of those will go down. I, I don't want to commit to where, just because I think we're going to have another kindergarten teacher potentially as well.
Okay.
But those can, those will get even smaller. So I don't have any concerns with Craneville class size right now, where it stands, and those will go down. So does that mean we can open in grade four, Greg? Or do we want to leave some flexibility and just be open?
We're opening grade four, third grade at Craneville.
So we're not opening grade three?
We're not, like, grade three.
Grade three?
The only thing I'm looking at is grade three. I didn't have four for kindergarten. I think I moved it up.
Oh, you moved them for me? Greg already had a plan. No one believes we're going to see this kindergarten bubble again, but I think there's a chance that we could.
Well, the decision tonight, or the decision that's been made is just, are we open?
Yes, you're right, the upper end.
We're not talking about individual classes or approving them, right?
No, they don't. And I'm sorry, just so I can tell Brad, I'm probably muddling it for you. What you're seeing is, what we're trying to figure out is, we have an extra teacher at Craneville somewhere. We don't know if we're going to need them in the kindergarten classroom or if we can put them in the upper grade levels. I'm looking at it, we've had this conversation. That decision will be delayed.
What we asked last year, at least in the finance subcommittee, was if you ever said no
Yes.
to any class in any school, did you come to the school committee and inform that, inform us of that? Because we might not want to do that. Might not want to say no for a lot of different reasons, some even the lower grades. We buy perhaps a family for the next twelve years. And there are lots of things that we can do and we shouldn't shut these things off prematurely. And this is valuable. As you said, we're going to be a stable of capacity in the future and we already are in the elementary schools, but in the high school. And that's something we as a committee have to work toward. We have to worry about that, be concerned about that.
So as of right now, the only?
So the answer to the question is, or the advice is, don't say no. So, the answer, the question is, or the advice is, don't say no without something that.
And as of right now, that I know I would say no, there's no staffing flexibility, it's Kittredge, third grade, I would come to you first. What I probably would honestly say first, which I would anticipate is best practice, would you like to consider Beckett-Washington? Because sometimes we have to say yes.
Sure.
That would be my first approach, would you like to consider Beckett-Washington? But my second would be come back to you. It's very unlikely we will get a school choice in third grade at Kittredge, and if we do, I will offer Beckett-Washington, but then I would come back to the committee. I don't anticipate right now having to say no to anybody at Craneville because of our staffing flexibility, but if it ends up being high, high kindergarten, we may have to come back to the committee if we get school choice requests at Craneville in third and fourth. But as long as we're open as a district, we have that flexibility to have that conversation all spring and summer.
Right.
Thank you. That makes sense. Any other discussion about that? Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, she's listed the personnel changes. And is there any old business? Any new business? Any remarks for the good of the committee?
Your president says anything?
Probably. National Breed-Ale, Dan, that was so awesome. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come into the schools and see the students. It was, I know that Bonnie and I talked about it, it was a wonderful day.
We love having you. Really appreciate it.
Yes.
I got to read to the pre-K children, and what a delight they were, they were just wonderful people. Future voters, future citizens.
Okay, so, we will now move into executive session. Do I have a motion? Second? Okay, do we have a roll call? Okay, can we have a recommendation, Mr. Black?
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the addendum to the superintendent's contract establishing for salary for FY '21 and FY '22.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. The meeting is, motion to adjourn, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is over, and eight to six, Bonnie.